Welcome to the May 19th regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Please take a moment to silence your cellphone and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Ringold, can you take role, please?
Yes, President Roush.
Here.
Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Ringold is here. Treasurer Lauterbach.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Craig.
Here.
Member Horowitz.
Here.
Alright, everyone's here. Item number two is the consent agenda. 2.1, approval of minutes from the April 21st, 2025 regular meeting and April 21st closed session. Item 2.2, approval of the food service contract renewal. Item 2.3, the below staff are being recommended for hire as listed in your agenda packet. Item 2.4, the below staff have announced a resignation on the effective dates as listed in your agenda packet. And then item 2.5, approval of the payments of the school systems bills for the month of March 2025 as listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby in the amount of $8,760,415 is recommended. The distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation. Finally, item 2.6, approval is requested to authorize legal payments to the below list of professional legal fees, professional legal fees as listed in the agenda packet. Can I have a motion for approving items 2.1 through 2.6?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Horowitz, support by Lauterbach. Any discussion? All in favor of approving items 2.1 through 2.6, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and I believe we have a few individuals with us tonight that we actually approved their positions and typically they will come up and address the audience, but start with Chelsea, do you want to start?
Alright, good evening. It's with immense gratitude and excitement that I stand before you tonight. Thank you for entrusting me with the privilege of serving as the next principal of Central Park Elementary. Central Park has been more than just a school to me. It's been my home. From its very inception, I've been part of this incredible community. I've been part of this incredible community, growing alongside of it, from a kindergarten teacher to an assistant principal, and now stepping into the role as principal. It's truly a profound honor. Over these years, I have witnessed firsthand the unwavering dedication of our exceptional staff and the boundless potential within each and every one of our students. I believe wholeheartedly in the spirit and strength of Central Park. I know where we've been, I believe in where we are, and I have a clear vision of where we will go together. I also believe in the power of strong partnerships with our families. I look forward to expanding programs like our Changemaker volunteer cohort to further strengthen these crucial connections and actively involve our families in the educational journey of their children. And another key focus of mine will be on continuing to bolster our reading scores and ensuring students have equitable access to a strong foundation for future success. Thank you again for your confidence in me. I'm excited to embark on this journey. I have three boys that will be going through Central Park. I'm not sure if they're excited for me to be there, but I am very excited to be there. And really, I'm just dedicated to the Central Park community and really the Midland community as a whole. Looking ahead, I look forward to collaborating with all of you to work on, you know, just ensuring that our future is bright for all of our students. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Chelsea.
Hi there. My name is Katie Rinkie. I am coming from Mount Pleasant Public Schools where I've spent about 14 of my 18 years of education and in the Mount Pleasant Public School District in Central. And I too am just excited, my family and I live in Midland and now we're excited to be part of this school system. I've heard so many great things. I have family in the school system now, but I'm excited to be part of the Seibert community as their new principal. I've already met the wonderful Mr. Schroll and he has sent my young children home with peanut butter already. But I've heard wonderful things about the community and culture there and I can't wait to meet, I see we have some students down here, I can't wait to meet our students and family and continue the wonderful traditions and success that school has seen. So thank you for having faith in me and welcoming me into your district, so.
Kevin Schwedler, came from, coming from Frankhamouth High School, but never left Midland County. So it is so great to be back and be in Midland County and be a part of what I say is a destination school district, a place that's talked about all over, well-respected academics and athletics. So just looking forward to the opportunity to work with our kids, our athletes, students, and give them the best student-athlete experience that they can have. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Well, congratulations and thank you to Chelsea, Katie, and Kevin. Welcome, welcome to the team and look forward to your success. Okay, item number 3.1, shining stars, Penny.
You know, I often say this is like my favorite part of the board meeting. It is pretty special, but look what we have in store here. We do have two shining stars tonight and interestingly, they're both Katie's. So let's start with Katie Hilliard, come on up. I know Katie a little, this is not her cup of tea being in front of people receiving recognition. Wherever you want. Except back there. Perfect. Katie joined the MPS team in 2015 as a family intervention specialist at Central Park Elementary, which is the position she currently holds in the district. And that is a really special and unique position created to support our schools like Central Park, those that qualify for Title I services. Katie earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in social work from Michigan State University and her Master of Social Work from the University of Denver. Katie, you were nominated to be a shining star by colleagues and here are some of their comments. You constantly go above and beyond in your position as a family intervention specialist at Central Park. You're innovative, experienced, dedicated, and reflective. I think some of those are learner profile traits. You bring calm and humor to even the most stressful situations. You are admired for your ability to get to the root of student behaviors and design effective plans to address student needs. A quote, she communicates effectively with students' teams, including parents and teachers, and really connects with families so they understand the community resources. Another quote, not only do students love Katie, but she is also beloved by the staff. We know she will listen without judgment, validate our feelings, and offer practical and helpful solutions, and likely at least one related research article, which we know you're known for. I can't tell you how much we admire Katie for her knowledge, intuition, and dedication. She works tirelessly to support the students', family, and staff needs at Central Park Elementary, and we are lucky to have you as part of our team. Congratulations. Katie joined the MPS team in 2021 as a special education paraprofessional at Jefferson Middle School, the position she currently holds in the district. Katie was nominated by numerous MPS colleagues and some students, and here are some of their comments about you, Katie. You go above and beyond on a daily basis. You engage with students to keep them on task, answer questions, and help them stay organized. Students know that they can trust and depend on you, and you are an active, positive role model in the classroom who encourages students to do their very best work. You truly care about students and provide them with the support they need to be as independent as they can, and that is a special gift, trying to find that balance of support with independence. Not only do you support them academically, you also support them emotionally, taking them through problems and helping them navigate friend issues. Students remember you and return year after year to find you in the hallways because you are a happy, caring face. This is a quote, Katie's positive attitude and willingness to step up whenever needed makes a noticeable difference in the day-to-day success of our classrooms. Katie is valued by all. She is always willing to help any student on assignment or in their organization while also working with small groups and assisting with other tasks. Katie makes the class run smooth and students' faces light up when she's in the room. Congratulations on being a shining star.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And shining stars, as we said before, the extra special gift is that you are welcome to leave, as are your families, so that you don't have to stay at the board meeting. And same if our administrator, for our new hire administrators, you're welcome to exit as well. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a great day to be a Bulldog. I brought some with me tonight. I'm really proud of these students, proud of all my students, but in particular, we get to highlight some extra special talents that they have brought with them tonight. And the leader of that talented group is Andrew Warner.
Hi, I'm Andrew Warner. I am a teacher at Seibert Elementary as well as Chestnut Hill, doing elementary music and also beginning band. Seibert was donated these ukuleles this year by our wonderful PTO. I was told that when I came to Seibert that they were gonna be right there in the band, in the music room, and it was wonderful. I got to, it was like Christmas Day, I got to open a bunch of gifts. So, and I was excited for the kids to be able to do this. Uh oh. Next.
If some of you in the back are trying to get videos and pictures, you can come right up front.
Just to the next one, yeah. I have my fifth grade class, representatives of my fifth grade class. They're all in Ms. Morton's class. I thank them a lot for coming out at seven o'clock to play with us. Okay, so on this slide, I just wrote why I think music is important and why ukulele can add to that, like all instruments, I think. They help with our motor skills, our literacy, and our brain development. There's a lot of studies that show that, so. And then the last one, by introducing ukuleles, I aim to enrich the music experience for students and then align with hands-on practice. You don't have to read these, these are just our standards. I thought it'd be fun to include that. There's four things that we do, performing, creating, responding, and connecting, all of which apply to the ukulele. These are some examples from our class. We're not, these aren't videos, this is just the students normally see. So there's four videos, you know, like our beginner ones. This is more advanced ones, starting in chords in there, and we'll show you that along the way. And then the last one, the most advanced, this is the one we've seen the least amount because they've only had a year on it. If they, if we had these like three years ago, they started in third grade, I assume that we could get these by the end of the year. Okay, this is my dog, Ben, please. And one of the first one is all playing with the open strings. So ready? One, two, here. Okay, so when we are playing open strings, we can start to add our fingers to change the sound. So we're gonna go from C to D. And we're gonna read the music. Ready? We're gonna play this one for you. Here, one, two, ready? The first three chords that we learned are C, F, and G. And includes all of those ones. So here's "The Lion Sleeps Tonight," the first verse of it. Ready? Ready? Here we go. fingers. We're gonna play the "Bluey" theme with that group. If you're not in that group, that's okay, just wait. So who's all doing here? Okay, so the four of us are gonna play the "Bluey" theme. Ready? Here we go. Okay, so I wanted to have the students have a choice in what we were doing today. So I let them vote. We picked like 10 songs. I narrowed it down to four that were even possible on the ukulele. And then we ended up picking the duck song, which is a five-minute song, and we're not doing it. Oh. If it sounds like the story ends abruptly, it's why, we're only doing two verses. We don't really get anywhere in the story, but here we go. Not to put the students on the spot, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any, or I hope that the students would happy to be, answer any questions too. So we'll look at them for that. So if anyone has any questions that way, look over there. Yeah, at the school board.
Hey guys, how many times a week do you play your instrument? Once a week? You guys sound really good. What do you like best about it? Anybody can answer.
Bluey.
Bluey, alright, bluey? The duck song, okay.
Have, had any of you played ukulele before this year? That's one? Okay, cool. Very cool. So do you guys think you're gonna stick with ukulele or are you gonna branch out and try other instruments? Even with the strings?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, if I could, hold on, before everybody leaves, before everybody leaves. So Paul doesn't know this, but we, we wanted to say a few things since it's his last school board meeting.
Right.
As, sorry, Mr. Schroll. As Mr. Schroll is retiring at the end of the year. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to Scott, but ask, ask the parents and students just to stay around for two more minutes.
I am still trying to get "My Dog Has Fleas" out of my head. Paul, as you're getting ready to leave us, I want to say thank you. Everybody in this room wants to say thank you. You've, you've done so much for us. To the kids of Seibert and their families, you're always gonna be a role model and a legend. To my four kids, all of whom you have gone through your building, you're gonna be Principal You have an uncanny ability to remember names and faces, it is bizarre. You have this ability to make kids feel welcome, and I was just talking with Penny about this the other day, it's, it's unreal, how you know everybody in your building and you take time to really get to know the families, the students, and what their lives are about. You make them feel welcome, included, and safe, and Seibert's always gonna remember that. You've touched the hearts and minds of so many in our community through your selfless devotion to kids, your clear communication with parents, and your tireless dedication to your staff. We're gonna miss the heck out of you. It's been my pleasure to be your friend, and it's a great day to be a Bulldog. Thank you.
Next up on our spotlight series is Northeast, so we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Seibert and his staff.
Well, I'm not very cute and I really struggled on the recorder, but I'll do my best. Anyway, I am Keith Seibert, and this is my better half of our building. This is my first year as the lead principal at Northeast. I've had a 27 years at Northeast Middle School, so I care deeply about the students, the staff, and the building as a whole. And the first thing I did last year when I accepted this position was to interview individually as many staff as I could, even into the summer, and I got just over 70%. And the feedback that I received from the staff really gave me some information about the need to address some of the culture issues in the building. And so, you know, I started thinking a lot about that over the course of the summer. I had an opportunity to spend three hours interviewing a retired commander of a aircraft carrier for the United States Air Force, and, and he gave me a little bit of information about keeping culture and morale high in the military. And one of the ideas he gave me was to implement a coffee time with your staff, and so, thank you. That's the best way I know how. So we did, we just started this year, Coffee and Cookies with Keith. And other than my posture in the picture, it went pretty well this year. But really, I set that up because it gave me an opportunity to, to hear from the staff. One of the areas, as we surveyed, showed that I needed to work on improving or set up a, more of a formal environment to hear directly from the teachers of the building. With 80 different staff members at Northeast and over 800 kids, things can get very busy, and it's very difficult on a day-to-day basis to have meaningful conversations with that many people. And so we set these up and it was an opportunity for me to serve coffee and some cookies, or if it was in the afternoon, a Coke if they wanted that, and just to sit and listen to the staff for an hour. And it gave me a chance to hear what was going well, anything that needed to be addressed in the building, and then to, to try to handle that as soon as possible for them. And so far this year, we are working through getting to everybody, and so that's been a very good thing. The second thing that we tried to implement was culture teams at Northeast. And I am going to allow some of our staff to address each of those areas, but we set up a student subculture team, a staff culture subgroup, one that addressed the needs of the parents, and then a group to look at the data that we could look at actual numbers to inform each of those different groups as they're making decisions. And so I'm gonna pass it off to them and let them talk a little bit about each of those areas.
Good evening, I'm Jen Lennon. I am the learning coach at Northeast Middle School and have been for quite a while. And I lead the data team along with Keith, the both of us lead that together. And our goal with the data team, you can see that there are several types of data that are listed on the slide. Our data is about the whole child. You can see the first bullet is student perception survey data. So we're not just looking at academics, we're looking at other aspects of the child when we're looking at data. And our goal is that as we look at this data, it can inform our continuous improvement plan. For... plan for the building, as well as specifically helping the culture teams to know some things, some information to help them to, you know, figure out what is it that we need to work on. So this year, I want to hone in on the student perception survey data, because that's where we spent most of our time this year. And what we used was the annual report of our school's student perception data from Michigan Student Voice. There are 108 school districts in 2024 who took this survey or had their students take this survey. And it gave us a great opportunity to compare how our students relate to our district as a whole and as other students in other districts. The three main areas of the survey were sense of belonging. Do they feel a sense of belonging in our school? How are they doing socio-emotionally? And then, what about student engagement? Do they feel like they're engaged by our teachers? So those were the three areas we looked at. We were very pleasantly surprised at our data. We were higher in most of the questions, if not almost all of the questions, than the consortium of 108 districts. And we were right there at the district, if not a lot of times higher than the district average. So we were proud of that as well. This data is broken down according to gender and ethnicity as well. And so, it gives us that even more specific picture of how our students are doing. And what we would do then, what we plan to do and continue to do, is share that data with the subgroups. And you're gonna see that one of our subgroups is student culture. So this particular data fits really well with informing our student culture group with areas that we need to work on. One of the areas, I just want to point out, our lowest area, even though I said we did really well, I just, one of the things that we need to work on is this question that was asked of the students. Do you have open discussions with other students about different cultures and backgrounds? And so, that was our lowest. So we can think about that next year, and how can we infuse that more into the classrooms where these discussions are taking place? And then, as we implement new strategies, we can look at the data next year from this perception survey and see, did we make a jump in that particular area based on the different things that we did or we chose as strategies within our student culture group?
I'm Kim Sheldrick-Formsma. I'm the short one. I don't really even need that. I've spent 34 of my 36 years teaching at Northeast. So I've worked with a lot of kids over many years. And as we all know, that climate and culture is set by the administration. And having Keith and Kyle as the leaders in the building makes a tremendous impact on us teachers. They're committed to the students, and they're committed to not only student culture, but the teaching environment, environment for parents, and all stakeholders. Research consistently demonstrates a strong correlation between positive school climate and improved academic success, encompassing higher test scores, grades, and overall engagement. The Journal of National Association of State Boards of Education has written extensively about the power of school climate in building equity, minimizing adversity due to socioeconomic factors or learning difficulties, and improving attendance. At Northeast, we recognize that the following key factors contribute to a positive school climate: a strong teacher-student relationship, a sense of belonging, effective social-emotional learning strategies, and a safe, physical environment. Our student subculture, our student culture subgroup has worked in conjunction with members of the Northeast Student Leaders of Viking Leadership to facilitate student activities, which include tailgate, talent show, Santa Parade, school spirit days, locker signs, school parties. Many of these things we've done in the past. What we have seen this year is an increase in student participation and in staff participation. Intentionality is the key to success, and we are looking forward to continuing the work we've started this year.
Hi, I'm Kristy Valmering. I am head of the staff culture team. I've been in the district since 2007, but I've been at Northeast for the last 10 years. I teach sixth grade. So one of the things that we talked to Keith about last year was maybe having a little more fun, and that's where I come in. So I get to help plan with my group some fun things for us to do. You can see on the slides that the picture up in the upper right-hand corner was our staff holiday party, and that was our winning team. They won some Viking chalices as prizes. Down below, we have a picture of what we call our Thor Award. So that is an award that one staff member gives to another staff member at each PD that we have, just to show their appreciation for being supportive or being a good leader or something like that. We also have had, we had a staff versus student basketball game this year. A group of us went to the HRS Summit in San Antonio in January, and that was really awesome, except that I got the flu. So that part wasn't so fun, but it's not about me. Anyway, so yeah, I just get to bring the fun, and, because we all need a little bit of that, as you know. You know, we work really, really hard, so it's important, and it's great that our administrators support that. Thank you.
My name is Jen Jaster, and I have been with the district, this is my 25th year. And I've been at Northeast since, I think it was 2013 when we did the consolidation. And I am in charge of the parent culture team. Clearly, we all know that a student's success is best when the student, the teacher, and the parents are all working as a team towards that goal. And so, we have the charge of identifying what were some struggles or issues or just areas where we can improve communication with parents. We're unique in our building in that we do with proficiency skills, and that sometimes presents a challenge because it's a different way of grading. As students are coming into our building as sixth graders, even between grade levels, even though we're all using proficiency skills, how we use them at each grade level can be a little different. So for example, I recognized last year when we in seventh grade ELA piloted doing units, it was a struggle for kids and parents coming out of sixth grade because the scales were a year-long scale. So that meant that the students had until the end of the school year to achieve at a proficiency level, which is a 3.0. We were doing units, as were the math does units, the social studies does units, science does units. So that was a new concept for students. So we sat down and we talked about what were some of the issues, the barriers in communication. We identified really two things. One was making sure that as a staff and as a building, we are all on the same page in how we communicate growth and improvement to our parents and to our students, so that students always know where they are, parents can easily find out where their student is and how their student is performing at any given time. So one of the things that we're looking at doing for next year is we're going to put together some type of a handout or something online that shows students and parents at grade level what the scales look like for each grade, so they know how to track that throughout the year. The other thing that we identified was that sometimes parents struggle with using synergy. We do as well sometimes as teachers. And we use it differently because we are using proficiency scales, so synergy is set up differently for Northeast and how we use it. So we looked at some of the barriers there as well, and what might be a struggle for parents to understand on synergy how their student is doing. One, for example, is they need to be in standards view, and if they're not, it's not going to show up properly. The other being that we might need to work with the synergy team or system to be able to, just to fine-tune a little bit more what our options are for recording and progress to parents. For example, it's at a 4.0 level, which is what the scale goes to, but really, we're looking at 3.0 proficiency. Do we really need a 4.0? So those are just some things that we're working on to build communication with parents.
And I'll just add a little bit. I was also in that group, Kyle Woodruff, I'm the assistant principal at Northeast. Some other things that we talked about was at our orientation, having like a standards-based 101, kind of a spot where parents can go, just to basically talk about, you know, standards-based versus traditional grading, because we all came up through a traditional grading system. So Northeast is unique in that way. So we talked about bringing that to our orientation. And with synergy, a lot of times, parents aren't, like she said, familiar with using synergy. So just having a station set up where office assistants can help, just help to get them logged on, and then just navigate through so that there's easier communication. So that's what I wanted to add. Thank you.
All right, so this is just a quick photo of our staff. I wish I could say that was from yesterday, but that was from the first day of school. They look very energetic, and still do overall. But we really focus, as they just said, we look at the student needs in the building, staff, parents in the building as a whole. And so, that's been some of our efforts over the course of this year, and really are gonna serve as a springboard as we start the '25-'26 school year. So with that, we will take any questions if you have anything.
Keith, it obviously looks like you've done a lot to put not only trust in place, but a really good culture. As you continue to work through each of those subgroups with your team, what are a couple of things that we can help you with? What do you need from us?
One thing this year was, one of the photos you saw is we sent a team to the High Reliability Schools Summit this year. And each year that we're able to do that, we, it's an opportunity for staff to really engage in a much larger picture of each of the small areas or the things that we're doing within the building, to really connect all of the dots. And so, that has been extremely helpful. The district's always been very supportive of that. And through, you know, over the years, honestly, I think in the last 10 years, we've had retirements exceeding just over 70% of the building. And so, each year, there's that challenge of teaching staff, of getting them to know the system that we have in place at Northeast, and try to keep everybody on board and going in the same direction. And so, so far, it's gone pretty well, and we just continue to strive for that. So we appreciate your support and look forward to working with you, you know, again next year. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Two great spotlights tonight. Thank you for bringing them in. Next on the agenda is item 3.3, Facility Improvement Bond Proposal Update. Obviously, the bond did not go maybe the way that we wanted it to go. But as I look back on the last two years, there's a heck of a lot of work that's gone into that process. You know, I wanted to start by thanking each of our administrative team, Mike Mogenberg in facilities, and every single teacher and staff member that contributed to the process. It was an extremely collaborative process. There were countless hours put in outside of the normal working day. You know, I also want to look to the FFO committee in particular and say thank you for all the work that each of you had put into the bond proposal and the process. And then, to each of our board members, you know, I think, Penny, I don't know how you did it, but 62 different, 61? 61 different community conversations, countless emails and phone calls and engagements and one-on-one conversations. Just want to say thank you for, to each and every person that contributed to the process. I think, you know, at the end of the day, not only did we have 62 opportunities to talk to the public, but we also had 1,700 people respond to a survey, and just awesome interaction from our community overall. All that to say, you know, this is a step in a process. We have a ton of work still to do. The needs of our building only get larger every day. We've got 11 buildings that are old. We've got 10 of them that are particularly old. And we've got hundreds of thousands of square feet of roof to replace, as an example. So, you know, the question is, and I've probably been asked this no less than 30 times over the last 10 days, but what do we do now? I think what we have to do now is take a step back and reengage our community, listen to our community about what to come back with, because as I said, the needs have not gone away. We still have needs. You know, for, so through that process, and how do we do that, is something that Penny and I have started talking about one-on-one, and would look to each of you for providing us with guidance and recommendations. I think the first step is figure out how to collect meaningful survey data and feedback from our community on what did you like, what did you not like, and how to move forward as best as possible. With that, I think we'll, you know, over the next month, Penny and I will probably come back to you with the recommendation as to next steps, and how to reengage our community to get the feedback that's necessary to go forward with a new scope of work, and maybe how best to fund the next steps. That's probably everything I had. I'd look to any board members if you want to add anything or make any other suggestions. If not, Penny and I can come back in a month and assist a path forward.
I have some thoughts to share. I don't have any concrete suggestions, but just some thoughts that I gathered over the course of the last 10 days. I got a lot of feedback, as you all did too, both before and after the election, particularly from people that voted no. I wanted to understand, you know, what, where we didn't communicate, what, you know, what we didn't do right. And generally, I found that the no votes fell into no fewer than three categories. But the top three are the people who said it's just too much, $285 million is too much money, it's too many projects, come back with a simplified plan. Then there were people who said they voted no, because we didn't spend enough. We didn't build a pool. A pool is a need in the community, there's no question. We attempted to address needs that were more acute for our school district. The third group were people who thought that we took a short-sighted view, and that we didn't look far enough down the road and plan for the long-term needs of the district. We know that there are operational cost savings if we only have one high school, and one football stadium, and one baseball field, and softball field, and so forth. The construction costs will vary depending on the amenities, but even if enrollment goes up as we've projected, there's a lot of merit to the idea of one high school. I'm not ready to go back to the voters yet. I think we need to fully understand what the results mean and what the community wants. But I think a survey with voluntary participation is not gonna give us an accurate cross sample of the community. But I also want to offer this perspective to those who say it's just too much. Between 1940 and 1960, the population increased in Saginaw by 19%, Lansing by 37%, Detroit by 14%, Grand Rapids by 7.9%, and Midland by 345%. A 345% increase in the population of our community in 20 years. I don't know any other city that grew that much that fast. I looked, I couldn't find it. There are some hundreds out there, but there's not one other city that I can find that in that short a period of time tripled in size. We accommodated that growth by building nine school buildings in 20 years between 1950 and 1969. So there's a little bit of a lag between when you see the population increase, when kids start school, and so forth. But between 1950 and 1969, we built nine school buildings. I couldn't get all the numbers to find the total cost. I couldn't get all the numbers to find the total cost, but three of those, I could get cost numbers for three of those buildings. When you extrapolate that out into $20, $25, three of those buildings cost $170 million. So between 1950 and 1969, our community supported the idea of nine school buildings that, you know, somewhere well in excess of $285 million. The funding mechanisms were different then than they are now, but the community nevertheless supported them and we've all benefited from them. We still are. We also benefited from the growth that, or from, you know, the growth at Dow that represented that population increase. All of us that are in the business community benefited from that and we still are. People had to build those houses. People had to build the churches. And the private sector stepped up and the lawyers in town and the physicians in town and everybody who was here at the time benefited from that growth. Midland is a unique place that has amenities that no other community of 43,000 people has. All nine of those buildings are still in service, but they're between 55 and 75 years old. It is going to come home to roost whether we like it or not, whether anybody likes it or not. I don't want a tax, I know nobody wants a tax increase. I don't complain when the value of my house goes up, but none of us wants a tax increase. We heard the message. This was not the right proposal and I understand that people get the $285 million or $400 million with interest. Shocks a lot of people. Our community did it before and we have a responsibility to take care of what we've been given. There isn't a simple, there is no simple plan. We have nine buildings and over the next 20 years, we got a lot of work to do and it's going to be really expensive. And the FFO Committee, we're going to go back to the drawing board, we're going to start over. I don't know what it's going to look like, but if anybody thinks that we're going to get new or renovated school buildings with no tax increase or for less than $285 million, they got another thing coming. We're going to take the feedback, we're going to listen, but we're the ones who have to do the right thing. And it may look easy from the bleachers, but we're the ones that have to make the decision. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd like to share some thoughts. I am the freshman on the board and joined in progress after a lot of the work had already been done to put this proposal together. And I, well, I'm not happy with the result. I really enjoyed the process of attending the meetings, hearing from community members, community members who I agreed with, but more importantly, those who I did not agree with because I see opportunity there. If you're looking at this in a way that's different from how I'm coming at it, then there's something that I can learn, there's something that we can glean from that that can help us be stronger as a district. So I appreciate the, all voices. As we go back to the drawing board and solicit feedback from the community again, I want to encourage those who hear a proposal, hear a suggestion from the board and have that gut, no, have that visceral reaction, whether it's something that's set up here and you just feel like, well, no, that's not, because I know this, this. If you're having that feeling, I want you to, I want to encourage you to be curious about what is at the root of that. Because for us to get to a solution that works for our kids, not for us. I mean, there's no one here who works in any of these buildings that would be renovated. There's no one here who has to spend time trying to learn in one of these spaces. But we're doing it as, to try to do what's in the best interest of the students. So if your gut is telling you no, or if your gut told you no last time, which we heard that that message was passed on, I ask you to be very curious about what would get you to yes. What is it that you need to say, you know, maybe it is smaller, maybe it is a different focus, and bring that to the table. Because I, for one, would love for us to come to this next time around with something that not just, that reflects the values of the community while also taking care of the needs of the students and maintains the integrity of the district.
Thanks, Becky. If, thank you, John. Thank you, Metke. Thanks to all of you as board members for all the work that you've done over the last two years. Truly appreciate it. And John, you said it well. We're not here to do what's easy. Doing what's easy is serving your time and kicking the can to the next board. That's easy. What's not easy is being honest with the community about the needs of the district. So like we said, we'll come back and continue to address the needs of our community. With that, we'll move to item four, Request to Adjust the Board. First on my list is Sarah Galt. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate the conversations and the sharing that I just heard. Like most in our community, I support our students, teachers, and the school district. I believe good public schools are foundational to a strong democracy. Along with about two-thirds of the voters, I voted no on the recent bond proposal. This defeat is a strong message, as you mentioned, that the proposal was unacceptable to the community. I would suggest to you that the thinking behind the bond proposal was also flawed. I challenge MPS to think again about the district needs in a new way. The past and perhaps current thinking is not going to work. Be appropriately frugal and focus on the critical, not the nice-to-have. Do be more transparent with the community about the embedded projects, the alternatives considered, and all of their costs. Without that transparency, you have lost some of the trust from the community. Instead, we have the impression that everything that anyone wanted was added to the proposal. As an example of frugality, do not hold any more off-cycle elections. The cost of about $100,000 could have been spent on teachers and students. Remember that class size is critical for both students and teachers. Class size is more important than the latest gadgets. Do not incur interest over a 30-year bond for items with a short life. Consider a sinking fund and do a better job of maintenance in current facilities. I challenge you all to change the thinking and come back with a proposal that is much cheaper, smaller in scope, and focuses on what is critical for teachers and students. Thank you.
Erica Church.
Oh, sorry. Good evening. So last Thursday, my son came home in a state of emotional distress that I had not seen in almost a year. A little backstory, my son was a victim of abuse from his previous instructors. He spent the entire school year being targeted and abused, both emotionally and mentally. This is something that I addressed with the principal on multiple occasions and to my despair was not handled appropriately. See, the abuse started after I stated that I did not believe my son needed medication for ADHD, which I believe has been supported by his ability to prosper in his current instructor's class, Katie Condon. So why did he come home distraught on Thursday? He was told that Ms. Condon would no longer be allowed to teach moving forward. He was also given the impression by multiple adults that he was the reason for this decision. This is highly inappropriate for a fifth-grade student. He was informed that this decision was made because of an incident that occurred between him and another student and that the teacher was mean to the students. This could not be further from the truth. Katie Condon goes above and beyond to ensure that her students are able to grow and prosper. She allows them this ability to develop in critical thinking, decision-making skills, and ensuring a safe and structured environment. It was highly inappropriate for my son to be given the impression that it was his fault for a teacher to be terminated. The students were hopeful that this specific teacher would be allowed to move on with them up into the middle school as teachers do, as students do with their favorite teachers. Throughout my experience with the teachers and administration at Plymouth Elementary School, I have found that the decisions are made not in the best interest of our students, but are made based on insecurities and egos and vindictiveness based on the administration. I strongly urge you, if you care about our students and their ability to prosper moving forward, that you would reevaluate the culture within Plymouth Elementary and help to reinstate Mrs. Condon moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. You can follow up with us afterwards. I'd appreciate it. Joe Bonadie's.
Welcome to the post-May 16 paradigm. And if it is any consolation, many school bonds failed across the state, including most of the big ones. I was on vacation recently and had a chance to read 1984 and it unfortunately resonated with this bond. The significant drumbeats of the bond's defense fell into place. One, only look at our website for the truth. Trust only our data. Sounds like Orwell's Ministry of Truth as the only source one should believe, despite the fact that the data on our site came from your documents or the state of Michigan. Two, we saw double speak on several occasions. Northeast Middle School is falling apart and needs to be replaced, but it is safe for another nine years. Or if this bond does not pass, we will have no money, ring gold on Facebook, but we whip out $4.1 million for an extracurricular activity for 450 kids. Or we can't put money in an old building like Northeast, but we can put $43 million into a building only seven years younger, Midland High. Three, it will feel like 3.25 mils versus the legally required bond language of 3.90 and later rising to 4.95. The people's money does not have feelings. We either possess it, or in this case, it is confiscated by the government because people live on a budget and don't get massive injections on the side. Four, your emotional similes were disrespectful to the 30% disadvantaged in our district. Going with the only a dollar a day does not resonate with the person who just canceled their Netflix subscription because it did not fit in their budget anymore. Five, in a true anti-1894 or 1984 paradigm, the proletariat or the Proles were able to stand in revolt against the party elite. Sorry if shiny new buildings are part of the corporate recruiting needs. We want the kids to be able to read without busting the budget. But enough George Orwell. You asked for input on the significant no vote on May 6th, so here's mine. I will grant you that you cannot keep the wheels on with the state's per-student allowance. Given that, I would propose you try and pass a less than two-mil sinking fund ASAP. A 1.95-mil tax will get you something like $5.9 million a year. That and the bloated fund balance will let you do what you need to do and a few nice-to-haves to keep the things going for now. Don't pause like you did in 2013 and let the wheels fall off. You don't get to determine your legacy. Time will tell. And the shiny new buildings won't have a luster you think when its tax signature will still be around for half of its lifetime. Just because MSB says it is lawful to not present information that is not flattering to your efforts, it looks worse when it comes out and you call it misinformation. That dog don't hunt anymore. Lastly, I will acknowledge that being on the school board is a thankless job and despite the accusations, I'm not against education. We just need to figure out how to prioritize fundamentals again.
Thanks, Joe. Stephen Sapiak.
I too, like a lot of these people here, voted no on that bond proposal. And for me, it was a maintenance, a maintenance of those buildings. And that's something that's probably going to be FOIA-ed is the records on all your buildings because that needs to be very transparent. When you're trying to push this, this big bond and you didn't do yourself a favor by not including the interest on it like this group dug for you, that was huge. I talked to a lot of my neighbors and a lot of them are elderly, but some young people and they were shocked. It took us older group of people to wake them up because I'm not going to see the end of this bond. I'll be dead, just like a lot of these people will be. It's going to carry on whatever you guys do. But I agree with them on the sinking fund. You're going to have to do something. You can't wait. And I tell you what, you got to, the first thing I learned is you got to be honest. You got to be upfront. And as far as Mr. Lauterbach and what he was saying, I agree with it. But you're forgetting one thing back from those days. You were pre-proposal A. Like you said, we're in a different era now. So you got to start thinking outside the box. That's washed away. But you got to maintain your buildings. I worked in industry my whole life. I'm 67 years old. And I'm here to tell you, I've worked in a lot of old buildings, a lot of old buildings, but there was huge capital put into them all along and that's what needs to be done. School buildings aren't industry. They're a total different nature. Roofs are paramount and you must keep the boilers. You got to, you have to maintain those. You can't let them get into disrepair. I'm going to tell you right now, teachers and you school board, most of you people don't have the expertise on that. I've seen it from the inside. I know what it is. All you need to do is go over to the city of Bay City, because I worked for that wastewater plant over there and I lost my job because of funding cuts. I could have bumped into their water plant. Had I done that, I would have been still looking for a job and I seen why, because they didn't maintain it. It was four years older than the newest part of the Midland Water Plant where I ended up retiring out of last year because of maintenance, because they didn't maintain it. Right from the top on down, the plant superintendent, and I knew that. And it's a damn shame. It really did a disservice to that city over there.
Bill Damana.
I learned a lot recently about the makeup of the voters in the outer parts of the district and in the older and lower-income sections of the city of Midland. I delivered dozens of campaign signs and heard their fears and frustration at being hit with yet another tax increase when they are barely getting by. One elderly lady at church was almost in tears stating that her grocery bills had doubled over the last four years and that even 300 a year was going to be devastating. She even said that she personally knew of several families living in a single-family house just to make ends meet. I think that MPS needs to hear their cries when asking for additional tax dollars. Second, I strongly encourage the board to switch to seeking, from seeking a bond to a sinking fund for specifically enumerated items such as 10 buses over the term of the fund, renovate Northeast infrastructure, et cetera. Big language on what the money may be used for will likely fail as trust is lacking. Voters were viscerally angry at the foolishness of financing items with limited life cycles such as buses and laptops for 25 years. Third, a lawyer friend who attended Woodcrest relayed that he remembered how the appearance of both the interior and exterior of the school decreased significantly when custodians were replaced by contract cleaning staff. Custodians may cost more, but invested people take pride in their school and communicate maintenance issues before significant damage occurs. I recommend that you hire nested custodians again. If you say that MPS can't afford them, then I suggest you can't If you say that MPS can't afford them, then I suggest you can't afford not to. Fourth, at the last board meeting, a craftsman who worked with contract firms on projects in several MPS buildings, we had a long discussion regarding MPS maintenance and how many projects designed by major engineering firms in the past often lack the institutional knowledge and practical understanding necessary to result in an optimal outcome. I suggest forming a citizens committee consisting of people with hands-on experience ranging from craftsmen to project managers in both commercial and industrial settings to review the current maintenance strategy and implementation practices. A robust predictive preventive maintenance program is critical. Finally, based on board decisions in the recent past to demolish multiple schools, voters see MPS as having a philosophy analogous to leasing a car every four years to avoid doing the maintenance, where in this case MPS wants new buildings instead of making every effort to maximize service life. This needs to change. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board this time?
Good evening. Renita Bonnades. I believe this board did a disservice to this community with this bond proposal, and I'm grateful the community gave a resounding no vote. I asked MPS a couple of times on post if school choice kept the building capacities at the 85% utilization target. I never did get an answer. Was it because you don't use that as one of the criteria when determining those open seats? The board and administration labeled our campaign disinformation, but never stated which of our facts were incorrect. Did the district try to emotionally pressure the public into debt? The public was told if this bond didn't pass, then the money would have to cut, be cut from teachers and parapros for the increase in needed general fund expenses. We may have had, we may have hedged new shiny buildings, but no real proof the children would have benefited academically. However, those children could still be paying on that debt while raising their children if they chose to stay in Midland. At the January 29th meeting last year, my husband asked about the bond proposal and why the public was not hearing any details. Brad's response was, we are barely even started. We have to reach out to the people and have focus groups and community input, so we don't have anything that we could even dream up of a date for a bond proposal. We have a lot of work to do for that. Then by fall, we hear that the board has been working on this bond for a couple of years. Now, which of these facts is the truth? How is the public to know when to believe what we are being told? One of the primary jobs of this board was to hire a superintendent. Joe and I sat through that process, attending the presentations and interviews in person. It was quite clear that MPS did not attract the cream of the crop, but why? MPS is touted as outstanding and academically excellent, and Midland is a great community. So why didn't highly qualified and experienced candidates apply? Why didn't the board wait until a truly qualified group of candidates applied? Why settle? During the interview process, it was clear the board knew Ms. Miller Nelson didn't have the needed financial background. She said she had Brian on her team to help with that area. After being hired, she moved Brian to a newly created assistant superintendent position. This added $230,000 to the general administration budget. So that, along with the $295,000 total compensation for the superintendent, means that it is now costing the district $525,000 to do the job of the previous, previous superintendent. There is a real issue with the transparency and openness of this board as it relates to the community. Verbally going after members of the community instead of improving transparency is certainly not the answer. You can do better or resign. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Close the floor. If there are specifics that you want to share with us, please reach out. If there are specifics on information that you did not get, please reach out. There are questions that you don't have answers to, please reach out. Happy to answer any of those that you might have. All right. Next up is item number five, curriculum instruction assessment. Item 5.1, CIA meeting minutes from April 21st.
I think it's the March copy that she's got.
So the curriculum instruction assessment committee met on March 21st. Members present were myself, Brad Blazy, Mckay Craig, Ken Weaver, Penny Miller Nelson, and we also had guests present Andrea Joswiak, Corey Spurling, Anne Ransom, Sarah Pankos, Amy Rankin, and Joy Yang. We met at Dow High School. Meeting started at 1:30, and we got an overview from Andrea Joswiak of our current CTE programs. We visited Lance Ransom's auto tech classroom, and we also visited Corey Spurling's engineering classroom, which was a wonderful visit. Then we went back to the IB classroom, Sarah Pankos' classroom, where Sarah Pankos and Amy Rankin are IB coordinators, presented on the IB diploma program. And then we finished up with Joy giving us an update on Emily Andrew Grant. We adjourned at 2:45 on April 21st, and our next meeting happened today, earlier today.
Thanks, Jen. Item 5.2 for action, staff development and curriculum proposals. Ken.
Yeah, we have tonight 18 staff and curriculum development proposals for your approval. Just like highlight a couple of the different programs. We have literacy initiatives. That, this is in the second year of being a staff development proposal that you can see highlighted here under number three, as well as number six, and our partnership with moving the literacy initiatives forward, as well as you can see the PYP after-school collaborative as well too, for that is working on our PYP program, and especially this year as it being an evaluative year coming up next year. That is going to be extremely important. And then last, I'd like to draw attention to the multi-tiered system of supports, staff development proposal, where we're working on enhancing our MTSS system, which is really our interventions and supports for students that are always responding to tier one instruction, so, or classroom instruction, so. And we're asking for approval for those.
Thanks, Ken. Take a motion for item 5.2.
Move to approve staff development and curriculum proposals as presented.
Support.
Motion by Ringold, supported by McFarland. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5.3 for action, textbook adoption. Ken.
Yeah, we have tonight also for action, some textbook adoptions. We have for the IB Environmental Systems and Societies. We have the book up here. If anybody's interested, they can still see it. We've had it out for almost a month outside my office. I don't think it's been perused too much, but it's there. And as well to Spanish, we're looking at updating our Spanish books for Spanish 1, 1A, 1, and 2, which those books are sorely needed, and we're excited to have those and get the team together on those as well too. So for asking approval for those as well too.
Thanks, Ken. Take a motion for item 5.3, the textbook adoption.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, supported by Ringold. Any discussion or questions on 5.3? All in favor of textbook adoption in 5.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She carries. Item 6 is finance facilities and operations. 6.1, FFO study committee meeting notes from May 5th, 2025.
Members present at the meeting were myself, John Lauterbach, Jennifer Ringold, Penny Miller Nelson, Brian Bruton, and Anna Womack. No guests. We met here at administration. We discovered, discussed our March financials. Were reviewed with the committee. Variances from year to year were discussed. We did review athletic trainer quotes. Administration informed the committee of the selected athletic trainer service based on the received quotes and stakeholder feedback. FSMC renewal. Administration will propose renewing the Chartwell's contract for an additional year. Meal prices. Administration will propose increasing the meal prices for 2526. MCESA budget review. Administration will propose providing the 2526 Midland County ESA budget. Robotics facility. The committee discussed the possible robotics facility. Facilities improvement bond proposal discussion. The committee discussed the upcoming proposal. Meeting adjourned at 6:04 PM.
Thanks, Brad. Item 6.2 for action, Midland County ESA 2526 budget. Anna.
In certain school districts, the local ESA or ISD will come in and present to the LEA or Local Board of Education what their budget is. Decades ago, the Finance Committee asked that the Finance Team represent the board at the ESA's budget meetings and hear that on behalf of the Board of Education and report back to you. Our Finance Team did meet with the ESA for a couple hour presentation with them and bring back to you tonight a recommendation for a resolution to support their budget. Some very high-level details from the budget are that their general fund and special education fund, which are their two main components, are largely balanced. The general fund balance percentage is coming in right around 10.6%. Their special education fund balance percentage estimated to come in right around 16.4%. Their goals for these are 10 and 15%, respectively. So they're coming in right along those lines, and again, both of these budgets are close to being balanced. They did grant employees steps and raises at approximately 3% and base their revenues off of a 3% property tax escalation rate. And they also do note that they have a van budgeted at a price of $65,000. After going through all of those lines, we believe that Midland Public is represented correctly within those, and do offer a recommendation for the board to adopt a resolution in support of the ESA's budget.
Thanks, Anna. Can I get a motion for item 6.2, the Midland County ESA budget?
Move to approve a resolution in support of the Midland County ESA Service Agency's 202526 budget.
Support.
Motion by Ringold, supported by McFarland. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of approving item 6.2, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item 6.3 for action, breakfast and lunch price increase. Anna.
Administration is recommending an increase in breakfast and lunch prices for the 202526 school year, the last price increase incurred in 2023. These increases are due to the requirements of Section 205 of the 2010 Child Nutrition Reauthorization Act equity in school lunch pricing. Milk prices are not affected by these increases. The recommended price increase for elementary breakfast and lunch is 75 cents per meal. This will raise the price of an elementary student breakfast to $2.80 and an elementary lunch to $3.70. The recommended price increase for secondary breakfast and lunch is also 75 cents per meal. This will raise the price of a secondary student breakfast to $3.10 and the base secondary tiered lunch to $3.95, 445, and 495. Adult lunch prices will also increase proportionately. Reduced lunch prices will remain at 40 cents as required by federal law.
Thank you, Anna. Can I get a motion for item 6.3?
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, supported by Ringold. Just maybe two comments. One, as Anna said, this is a calculation that we do by law, not because we want to. And then, second, one of the proposed line items in the school aid budget for next year is still to continue food service for all, all of our students, correct?
Correct.
And that includes milk, correct?
Milk is included in the lunch or breakfast, but as a standalone is its own purchase if it's just milk.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item 6.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6.4 for information, gifts totaling $12,860.30. Anna.
The total amount of gifts listed for information only tonight is $12,860.30. These gifts this evening represent support for programs ranging from Midland's BPA, Dow High's trap team, Midland High's boys volleyball, Jefferson's STEM Club, Midland High's baking club, a donation to the Alps Program in Memorial of Mary Lou Angelotti, and more. As is tradition, all donors are going to be recognized in the credits of this evening's broadcast and also through board correspondence upon your behalf. We are grateful for our community's support of our students and our programs.
Thank you, Anna. Item 7 is human resources. Item 7.1, HR Study Committee Meeting Notes from May 14th, 2025.
Yep. The Human Resources Study Committee met on May 14th, 2025 at 9:00 AM. Members present were myself via Zoom, Mckay Craig, Scott McFarland, Penny Miller Nelson, Brian Bruton, Cynthia Marchesi. Guests present were Anna Womack and Sarah Dully. The meeting started at 9:00 AM. Brian Bruton provided an update on district staffing, current vacancies, and the district's effort to attract and recruit applicants. Members discussed the status of each affiliated employees group, groups, excuse me, Contract Review Committee and timelines for future contract negotiations. We discussed employee leaves, and wherein Anna Womack provided an update on the current status of employee leaves. And the committee discussed the salary recommendations process. The meeting adjourned at 9:52 AM.
Thank you, Ann. Item 7.2 for information. Brian.
Yep, thank you. We'd like to take a moment to extend our deepest sympathies on behalf of our board and staff to the following two families. First, to the family of Margaret or Margie Lee, who passed away on May the 4th of this year. Margie began her career with MPS at the Dow High Career Center as a career resource technician. She then transitioned to teaching English at Midland High for seven years before becoming an administrator in 1991. In her tenure as an MPS administrator, she was an assistant principal at Northeast, an AP at Jefferson, also an AP at Dow High, and principal at Northeast, where she retired in 2009 with 25 years of service. In addition, our sympathies to the family of Dr. Arthur C. Frach, who passed away on April 30th of this year. Dr. Frach began his impactful tenure with the Midland Public Schools in 1985, serving as the superintendent until his retirement in 2000. His contributions were recognized in 2000 with the Gerstacker and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Award. Dr. Frach's dedication to education extended well beyond his time with the Midland Public Schools, as he shared his expertise as a professor of educational leadership at Saginaw Valley State University following his retirement.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Item 8, correspondence from the Board of Education. Letters from the Board of Education to the following individuals is 8.1, is listed in your agenda packet. Item 9, scheduled activities for information. All regular, special board, special meetings of the Board of Education begin at 7:00 PM at the Administration Center unless otherwise noted. Item 10, study session discussion. Item 10.1, are there any points of clarification or comments from board members? 10.2, I'll turn it over to Penny.
Good evening. I'll first just make a few comments about our sympathy section of our agenda. I had a chance to attend the visitation in services for both Margie and Dr. Frach. I had a chance to attend the visitation and services for both Margie and Dr. Frach, and I think it's important to recognize the impact they had on our school community as caring, dedicated leaders. And it was also really lovely to see our current team members, teachers, administrators, others affiliated with the district, show up to celebrate the legacy that both of those individuals left here at Midland Public Schools. On a celebratory note, although those were actual celebrations of their life, so on another celebratory note, graduation is scheduled for Wednesday. We look forward to seeing you all there. Bundle up, as we've talked about. We will be monitoring the weather closely in collaboration with our colleagues and team members over at Dow Diamond and making decisions based on the weather as soon as we can. And just looking forward to those awesome celebrations of our graduates. I want to acknowledge that a couple of things regarding facilities. So I know that there was some concern or even criticism brought to us about the purchase of the robotics facility or the potential purchase of the robotics facility. And I want you all as board members to know those inquiries I've received. I've reminded those community members that we have been very open about our intention to meet the needs of robotics, aquatics, and our music and theater students, all the way back from that initial presentation when you all had to make the really hard decision to not include those three facilities in the bond proposal, yet at the same time made a commitment to find solutions for those needs. And I, as I have engaged with those community members who have expressed their concern or questions, it just took them a minute to remember that we made those commitments. So I am excited to say that we continue with that process for the robotics facility and are in that period of completing all the inspections and working toward a possible closing. I'm also happy to report that the Midland Center for the Arts has been really phenomenal. Matt Travis has been a great partner. Our music department has really stepped up, and we have identified what I think will be seven additional dates where we can have performances at the center. And we're working through those details in a contract as well with them. And so I wanted to assure that we are working to fulfill our commitment to our theater and music folks as well. And then in the aquatic space, we continue those conversations and look forward to that aquatics committee reconvening soon to find a solution for pool space. Other than that, as I said last time, as we approach the end of the year, lots of reasons to celebrate the great things happening. And if anyone ever doubts how fabulous our teachers and administrators are and what terrific students we have and the great work we do, look no further than almost any day in the Midland Daily News. They're picking up great stories about the success of our students and graduates. Katie continues to do a great job pushing that out on social media so that folks can really see and share in our celebration of all the great things happening here at Midland Public Schools. Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Penny. Item 11, German. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.